This time we'll open the committee, the whole meeting for our city council meeting of March the 17th, 2020. Before we get into approving the minutes and our further discussion, obviously, for those of you who are watching us via streaming and the few people we have in our audience, this is certainly a different setup. We're in an unprecedented time in our community, and we felt like it was the right thing for our city council to do is to demonstrate what so many of our officials and our president have asked us to do, and that's to create distance between each one of us. And so, we've taken what we have to work with here in this grand old hall that was built in the 70s, and we've tried to adapt it for the purposes of certainly providing social distancing here tonight. So, we apologize for the awkward setup, and I would expect for us, as we continue to meet, to look like this going into the future, and hopefully sooner than later, we'll get back to normal. But I want to thank the staff for putting all this together and coming up with this plan for us to remain inside this building, but to be able to create the type of social distancing that we think is important, and for what that communicates to you, to our community, that we are taking this seriously, and we're doing what we need to do to move forward. Okay? We'll get into more of that here in just a minute related to the virus and what is going on. But the council should have their minutes from the March 3rd committee, the whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Questions on the agenda? Mr. Buston. Let me start off by saying, excuse me, I got off track there for our script. Myself and Mr. Buston have been talking about a number of things related to what's going on now, and he's going to bring forth a couple of items for us to consider tonight. We certainly understand that nobody on the council has been able to be briefed on any of this, much less has been able to read thoroughly through what this is. Basically, in a nutshell, and Mr. Buston will get into the details in just a second, this allows us to declare a state of emergency for our city, and it gives you some of the authorities and opportunities that the city has to govern itself moving forward through this. And then, there's a resolution, which is a strong recommendation of how we would like for our community and how we expect our community to conduct their business here going forward. And so, we'll discuss that at this time. Mr. Buston.
As the mayor said, we have two items in front of you that we are proposing. The council of the city of Auburn cannot, by mandate, close local businesses. But what we do have is the power of the bully pulpit, and this is a resolution, people not allow more than 25 people in their establishment unless they can enforce some types of social distancing. It is a fairly strong-worded resolution. It has, we cannot force people to abide by it, but it is telling the citizens of the city of Auburn what this council is expecting of them and would like for them to do.
This time, Jim did summarize all of that. Would the council like just a minute or two to be able to read through this? Would that be the right thing to do? Because what we'd be asking you to do in just a minute is agree to put this on our agenda, which we would consider this an other business at the end of the agenda tonight. Okay? So, whatever y'all need to be comfortable with this, for this consideration, I want to be able to present to you at this point in time. So, does everybody want a few minutes here to read this? Would that be fair? I see a few heads nodding in front of me. I know it's a lot of information. I certainly respect that. So, let's just take a...
Mayor, why don't we temporarily adjourn until, let's say, 7:10, and then we can open the meeting up again if you'd like.
Sure, okay. Would there be a motion to adjourn until 7:10?
They're moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Do I have a move to adjourn?
They're moved.
We're adjourned.[277.83]
We've got to make sure that we know people don't just work eight to five. There are people that work in factories or people that work, you know, night shift. There are all kinds of things that we'd have to consider, so we don't want to go into that quickly. What we've done here is something that that we can do rather rather quickly to let the citizens of Auburn know that this is a serious situation and that we want them to abide by what the state health officials are telling us. Now, I can't say for sure, but it seems like that we may never have to get to a curfew, because I would expect that the governor and the state health department at some point will declare all of Alabama like they did for Jefferson County, in which they will automatically then close the, they have the authority to close businesses, and they will. And I expect that's coming. I can't say that, but it's, from what I've seen, I expect that to come before we would bring a curfew back.
I just had a quick question. Okay. On the second document, there's a time period, 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. Can you explain how you guys got to that time?
That's basically the day before the, oh, between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.
Right.
That's figuring that the majority of where in our community people congregate is after the 10:00 p.m. timeframe, and that though people also get, have to get up and go to work for different things, like people who, donut shop owners and things like that, that go early in the morning to do their their work. And so while I doubt that 10 people could be in a donut shop, it might, could be. So that was a consideration there of that timeframe.
Thank you.
You're not agreeing to a curfew by doing this. Curfew's separate, it becomes later.
This is, this is not a curfew. No, no, no. This is, this is strongly discouraged between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. This is not telling them they have to do it.
A curfew had to be vetted very thoroughly and all meet again to do that.
Right, and we are not proposing a curfew right at this time.
I understand that this is, we're not going to enact a curfew, and I'm strongly opposed to a curfew right now. I don't think we need more at this point. And like Jim, I think it could come from the state easier than it could come from us, so if the city of Auburn declares a curfew, we're a long ways from doing that.
But I think this, as the mayor said, this is just sending a message to our citizens that this is a serious situation. Please take it seriously.
And talking on the order from the public health director, I know that you had mentioned there were some counties, Jefferson, Shelby, and a few others that had, they had issued some kind of stricter regulations on regarding healthcare centers or senior citizen centers and daycares. If we do get added to that list in the future, that will supersede anything we do here. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
We need to reconvene to adopt any of that, or is that going to be?
No, we, we have no authority over that. That's the governor's office and the state health authority.
You have any idea beyond what you said that there's an expectation that we will, now that we've had an increase in?
Beyond, beyond, beyond our, and the mayor can talk to this, beyond our conversations with the state, what our, what we've heard from them, I think my best guess, and I'm taking this from, we are now a testing center. We're one of 20 in the state. I think we're going to find, because we're testing for them, we're going to find more cases. I think when we find more cases, that will trigger the the governor and the state health department to see us with the number of cases we have. That is why they chose Jefferson County. Jefferson County and Sherondin Counties have the most cases in Alabama, so that's why they isolated them. I think if they see that we are trending to that direction, they would isolate us as well.
And a lot of the restrictions that the state put on, those are, that's state level, right? We've, we've done what we can, or in this resolution, we've done what we have the authority to. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's not a, it's not a situation where we're choosing to implement, we could implement what the governor's doing. We just, we don't have that option.
We don't have that option. Only the governor and the state health department, and so it's, it's, and again, by state law, it's the county, state county health department, which are basically the same, they're just an offshoot, but the state health department and the governor's office, they make that determination. You, as a city council, cannot.
Jim, on the supposed curfew at some point, so you're saying we have no alternative, no, nothing, no in-between where we are now and a curfew, where we can't, can we restrict occupancy limits, for example? If the fire, as a hypothetical, let's say the fire inspector finds a business that is out of compliance for health, safety, and welfare, we can shut that down temporarily. Is that correct? Why, until that is corrected?
Yes, they, but that is by state code. So there, there are certain parameters in the state code that lets our inspectors inspect to those parameters. So anything that's in the state code, then yes, we can do it. Just the fact that it's, and it's, it is, again, it's complicated, but it's based on health, safety, and welfare. All those state codes are based on health, safety, and welfare. This is not in the state code, so we can't, even though it is a health, safety, and welfare issue, we can't have an inspector go and enforce this because it is not identified in the state code.
Okay, so the governor's state public health emergency doesn't encompass that in-between step of restricting occupancy or something along those lines? All right. And I'm assuming that all of these powers are only for COVID ID, COVID ID-19-related activities, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and is there a possibility of us putting a limit? I know it's 15K now. I'm personally uncomfortable with giving y'all an open checkbook. Is there a upper limit that we would, we'd be with for the time being? And then over and above that, you come back? I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
I'm personally confident, I'm personally confident in Jim's decision-making ability. He's, he has to come to us and, and inform us once it's all said and done, and Kelly, I'm just confident he's going to make the right decision for the right reason, and he's not going to recklessly spend money. I mean, I, I'm not, that's not a concern of mine, but the rest of y'all speak up if somebody else feels differently.
I'm, I'm not concerned with it. He'd have to be an idiot to go out and spend $100,000 unnecessarily, and he's certainly not an idiot, so. I think that'd speak for itself.
Won't touch that one, so. All right, and I have one other question. On the first resolution under section, subparagrafen D on the third, second page, you know, it's the appointment.
Say that again, which paragraph it was, Kelly? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
D, Delta.
Okay.
The one about appoint employee, remove, provide, it's got my rescue teams, auxiliary fire, and police, emergency management, all those types of things. You know, we have a public safety director and a deputy public safety director. Is there a reason that those duties are not delegated down to the action level for the public safety officials to, to oversee?
They are. They, the, again, they are from my, what the code allows, what state code allows me to do is to enforce the laws, but it gives me the authority to assign my designee to those law, to enforce those laws. So basically, the police and fire are my designees, the men and women who are in those departments are my designees to enforce those laws. So all of those employees are, are doing that as designees of the city administrator, which is me.
Jim, what's, what is our responsibility as individual council members regarding, in the instance, instance that a majority of us become incapacitated? We are, does law, what does law require us to do? I know that there's some law in the books about making successor appointments in the instance that we needed to meet, but five of us weren't available.
Right now, as the law states, if five of you aren't available, we can't meet. We have to, we have to have a quorum to meet. This is one of the, again, this is one of the reasons, although in this case, it is not as pertinent, but one of the reasons you declare a state of local emergency, so some decisions can be made without the council having to meet to make those decisions. But if you can't, if we can't get five members together, then we don't have a quorum and we can't meet. There's a certain statement, I think there's a certain number of meetings that you can miss before you are, and I don't know if that's with the council or not, in certain boards, there are a certain number of meetings you can miss, and then you're considered delinquent and you have to be replaced. I don't know if that's with the council or not.
Governor's office is looking into that situation, Brett. There are a number of cities that have spoken to the governor's office about this mandate that city councils have to meet X number of times a month, and that under emergency situations, we should have the flexibility to make determinations in the best interest of our community. Right now, we don't have any choice to do that, but I believe, just as Mr. Buston said, he believes that we'll see these state, these mandates go statewide soon. I believe that we'll get some action on that and some, I would call that relief on that in the near future. I can't promise you, but I believe, so that'll give us the ability to consider whether it's in the best interest of our city for us to meet or not, if we need to make that kind of determination. Someone has answered your question, Brett.
So if we don't meet the quorum, do we have to make up the meetings later on down the line, or is we're required to?
We're required to have two meetings. It, it, it makes it very difficult, as the mayor said. You're, you're required to have it, the law says you have to have it, but if you don't have a quorum and you can't have it, what do you do?
Yeah.
So, that, I don't know.
But procedurally, we could meet and then move to adjourn.
You could. You could just all get together, meet, and then adjourn.
And could procedurally, we have two meetings on one day?
You could. It just, it doesn't say when those meetings have to be, other than you have to have two a, two a month.
Go ahead and knock up a month and night, then.
So hypothetically, if we aren't afforded that ability to postpone or to not meet, then we could, in essence, push the meetings to the last day of the month and have two meetings on that day.
You could. And that would still meet the, meet the letter of the law.
Jim, how comfortable are you with continuity of government in those type of situations? I mean, business has still got to be done.
How comfortable with?
Comfortable with continuity of government in the situation that we either meet and adjourn, or we just don't meet. I mean, things have still got to be done. I mean, are we going to be okay with that as a city? I mean, I know under the emergency declaration.
Under the emergency powers, I think, yeah, I think we would be.
And the option of having remote meetings is not feasible, is that correct?
It is not approved at this time, but as the mayor said, I think we might see something in the future that will change that. Again, that has to come from the governor's office.
Have we been in touch with the governor's office about that possibility? We, the city of Auburn?
Yes, and I'm.
But if, if there's a.
Emergency situation like this.
Exactly. If you don't ask the question, you never get the answer. That's.
Oh, I think we've been asking lots of questions. Lots of questions, even, yeah, I'm confident that we're asking the right questions.
Any other questions or thoughts on either one of these documents? And if not, is it, would it, is the council okay with moving this? And I guess, Jim, would you like for us to take some kind of vote on that?
If the council's okay putting it on other business, then we'll just move it to other business.
Okay. Is there anyone on the council has a problem moving forward with putting this on the, on the agenda tonight in other business?
I guess I'm not clear, we're putting both of them on the agenda for later on?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember, one is a resolution that's a strongly, it's a strong recommendation to our community to the way they, we want them and would like for them to conduct themselves. Okay, if everybody's okay, we'll, we will do that, and we'll put that in other business. I want to continue this discussion before we get into our council agenda. You know, certainly, not only is the city of Auburn experiencing a situation that we've never experienced before, but so has our state. And I do believe that everybody's trying to work together to figure things out in a situation that is moving quickly. And we all know that what we think is going on now, by the time we wake up in the morning, might be totally different, and it's just happening that way. And so I want to let our citizens know, and we've tried to communicate this out, and I appreciate the staff has done a great job being very communicative in the last week, that your staff and your city is meeting every day, as many times as it takes, to try to make sure that we're doing all that we need to do to provide, to make your life safe, and to be doing the kind of things that puts Auburn in the best position to be successful and to get through this, this situation. The business continuity plan is something that our city's had in place for many years, and we've never had to use, but we're using it right now. And if Mr. Buston wants to talk about that a little bit later, he can. But I've been in city hall a lot, a lot more than I'm normally in city hall, and I just want the staff to know, I appreciate everything that they're doing to try to get us through this very difficult time. Jim, just a couple of questions for you. Do you feel like we've gotten to all the closures that we need to get to for the time being as far as city facilities? Is there anything else that we might consider in the future, or are we, are we in a good place right now, pretty conclusive where we are?
I think, right now, we are where we should be. I think we will consider the possibility of closing some of our parks if, if we see that there's an issue with people congregating and not doing what we're asking them to do in this resolution. So far, we have not seen that. We're watching that very closely. The dog park is very, very heavily used, but people seem to be using that social distancing. But should we see that not to be the case, and should we see other groups using our parks as we don't intend, or as the CDC doesn't want us to have people like that, then we would consider closing them. But other than that, I would not want to close the library unless we do not have any other way for our citizens who do not have electronic capabilities. We are, we have all the programs at the library closed, but actually closing the doors would put a considerable number of our population who don't have computers or internet at home at a, at a grave disadvantage, especially when schools and, and universities are trying to do distance learning or, or learning over the internet. There are very few resources for them if we don't keep that open. So, but if we see that that becomes a problem, we will have to close that as well.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure, go right ahead.
How many residents are you seeing coming into the library over the past week or so?
I, I don't have those numbers. I, I could get them, but I don't have them off the top of my head.
I'm just, I have heard time after time about the library, and I do have concerns around that.
And, and again, as I've mentioned to the council on numerous occasions, staff understands that when you work for the city, your duty, the only reason you're working is to provide services for the citizens of Auburn, and that means all of our citizens. And a lot of times, we forget about those who aren't as fortunate as most of us are and don't have the resources that most of us enjoy, and we have to remember them. Even in my communication with staff, I have to keep reminding myself, I sent an email, all of my staff are not on email. Some of our workers that, that, you know, are picking up trash and things like that don't have email accounts. So even in my delivery of messages, I have to make sure that we still print paper and make sure that they're, they're given the same opportunity as others to get the messaging. That's what we're doing here in the library.
Let me ask, I just want to ask one more question about the number of people. Okay, just like tonight, if more than 25 people had have showed up at the council member, and I don't know how many are here now, so what would have been there? I mean, do you ask the people to leave? I see you've got enough seats roped off that it's going to be more than 25 people if they had have showed up tonight.
What we are doing is practicing what is called social distancing. So what we did is, we have, I think, around 70 seats, so we could have accommodated up to 70 people. Now, by doing that, we understood we hardly ever have 70 people here at the council meetings, would be very unusual to have 70, but should 71 show up, one would not be able to come into the meeting. We, we are doing what we are being asked by the health authorities, and, you know, either groups of 25 or social distancing.
But being a public meeting, Mr. Buston, we, we also don't have the authority to tell people they cannot come. We, we've encouraged them not to come. There's been a lot of communication not to come.
But we have to allow them to come.
We have to allow them to come if they wanted to come.
But we can, if there's a capacity issue, to say, I'm sorry, we can't admit anymore. As Councilman Griswold said, there are certain laws about capacity, and in this particular case, for us, we're saying that, that we can't do that for the private sector, but we can do that for us, say, our capacity is going to be this.
Jim, are there, are there any computer resource facilities in Boykin? I believe when I took the tour over there, there were a couple of computer labs in Boykin that were run by some of the tenants.
There are. There's, the Boys and Girls Club have them.
Have we closed Boykin altogether, or?
We still have tenants in Boykin. We have closed Boykin to the, to the programs that we do, like the gym, and, but the, there's still the, the elderly program, there's still the childcare program. Now, I don't know if those will continue, but those are still ongoing.
Well, I know, I know that my sister, she goes to the mental health every day in Opelika, and she came home today and said they shut down for two weeks. So I don't know if the senior is going to shut down or not, but as of today, mental health shut, shut down.
You would think that the senior population, being one of the more vulnerable groups, would, one of the ones we look at really hard in determining if they're following.
The daycare.
I'm being told the senior program did shut down.
It shut down.
The daycare did too, right?
Okay, but the, the computer resources that are available in Boykin that are used by our tenants, is that a resource that we can tap into?
That, that's, that belongs to the Boys and Girls Club.
Now, those funds that you're getting, so, so when those seniors go home and some of them don't get hot meal, so if the programs run out, then you can accommodate them with some of the funds that you're getting.
So the mayor could probably talk to the meals program if you.
Sure. There's been a great effort, I'm very proud of this community for stepping up to, and Connie, I believe the, the primary focus has been the schoolchildren. I think Auburn City Schools is around 25 to 27% free and reduced lunch. There has been a consortium of groups that have gotten together that has included the Hudson Foundation, the Bruce Pearl Foundation, the Jason Dufner Foundation, are working through the Dream Center, which is a part of Highlands Church, receiving information from our school system to provide meals for the children in our school system who are a part of that program. I've talked to the superintendent a couple of times over the last 24 hours, and I've not been a part of any of those meetings, but she is very confident that they've got a great plan of action. Now, to answer the question that you were alluding to, I do believe that there's going to be an effort to try to consider some of the other unexpected consequences of this too. And I think your situation is, is one to consider, Connie, and certainly before the end of the night tonight, let's, let's talk about how we can communicate that to them. But I really believe that those entities are coming together, and they seem to be very excited and very committed to making this happen. I know that there are other entities in our community that are trying to help people. Those are primary church-related entities. So my sense is, and I can't quantify this by any action, but my sense is, based on communication and enthusiasm, that we've got a number of resources for people who need feeding while this is going on.
Food Bank also is during that.
Food, absolutely. Food Bank is part of that consortium. Thank you for reminding me of that. I should, they should have been the first one I spoke to, so I apologize. They've always done a great job for our community and been there when we needed them. Jim, as far as other meetings go that, that are not mandated by law, such as city council and planning, some of our other committees, some of our other commissions, what will be, what would be their course of business going forward here at this time?
Anything that we have the ability to postpone, we have. So the planning commission was going to have a work session on the short-term rentals. We have postponed that. That will be announced for a later date. The BZA has, was not required to meet, so they are postponing their meeting because of lack of, of, of a quorum, so their meeting will not be till next month, till May. So any meeting that, that is not mandated by law to have to happen, we are postponing at least anything from now until April 10th, which then at April 10th, everybody will reevaluate going forward what's, what's going on.
And as far as cancellations, I know the Southeastern Conference today has canceled all spring sports. I believe that NCAA canceled the things that they were in charge of, such as the championships at the end of the year, but the SEC, so we will not have a day here this year. I think everybody was certainly expecting that. Big efforts by the council and the staff in the community going forward. I've had a number of people ask me about Auburn 2040, and Auburn 2040 was due to kick off on April the 18th. I would say right now that we're certainly watching that, and we'll have to make some decisions on that in the near term, if it looks like it is something that we need to delay, postpone, or even cancel for whatever reason. But I believe we do have a little bit of time before we have to make that decision. Jim, something we do every other year in the summer is our budget hearings and our budget process for our biannual budget. As of where we are today on March the 17th, and knowing that that's primarily a function that happens in June and July, where do you think, from a council level, I know from the staff level, it's probably already started, but where do you think we are tracking with that right now, and with the uncertainty of our economic situation, for sure?
For the staff, right now, we're continuing on that course. We, we hope that come June, this will be behind us for the most part. Even if we, I may have, you may have seen, I've sent some information to, to some of you about, and this is not, you know, from official channels, but Char, not Charles Schwab.
Goldman Sachs.
Goldman Sachs had a investment, investors' meeting, and they predict that this thing will last 10 weeks, eight, eight to 10 weeks. And I'm, I'm hearing that, not from any official channels, but from other channels as well. So if that be the case, that puts us into May, maybe the first part of June. We could go to July for the budget and still meet our, our requirements to get the budget done by the end of September.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions from the council related to the COVID-19 world we're living in right now? Any other questions or thoughts that y'all had?
I, I have one more question.
Sure.
In terms of relief for our individual citizens, have y'all given any consideration to curtailing the 1% occupational tax or any other thing that we have going on that we currently tax our citizens on that might be able to curtail for a while and give them relief?
I think those are things that we could consider in the future. Right now, we don't know what the federal government is going to do. We're, we're hearing more and more each day what type of federal aid there will be available. I think once we see how that flushes out and what aid is available there, what types of aid will be given to the state, which will then be given to us to distribute, then we can make a determination as do we need to spend local money. And sometimes jumping out ahead and, and spending what little local money we can might inhibit those businesses that accept that from accepting what federal money might be coming down if there's some, we don't know what regulations will be put in place, so it's best, I think, right now, what is, what is going out there, what we're doing from our perspective, is we're not going to turn off anybody's water, we're not going to charge interest on loans of, of some of these companies that already have loans with us. If they can't pay right now, we will give them some leeway to, you know, pay us next month instead of this month or whatever. We're already doing some of that for the local businesses that, with which we have done incentives or things like that. But we do want to make sure that we're not jumping out ahead of what the federal government is going to do, and, and I think our best action there would be a little bit prudent and wait and see what the federal government does.
There be a mechanism that we could go ahead and be proactive on the city level, then piggyback or supplement that by any federal funding or then replay? We were to create a program not only for, as.
We could.
But our small business community as well.
We haven't gotten any word from the federal government what their requirements or recommendations are. This is just right, I mean, as of two days ago, we didn't even know what they were going to do. Now, today, we're even talking about possibly $1,000 to every man, woman, and child. Now, so, you know, it's still a work in progress, and we should kind of not react too quickly.
Yeah, I, I was not referring to, to giving people's things. I was referring to not taking their money from them, as, you know, for, as term of that occupational taxes, kind of where I was headed, but if, when y'all get around to looking at that from a budget perspective, I think that's a candidate to, to be considered.
Thank you. Anything else related to, just to ask the question, in the inverse, that this state of emergency, local emergency, does not need to extend April 6th? What would be the process in suspending that? I don't imagine that's going to happen, but I'm saying.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
What would be procedurally our process to suspend this declaration if not needed by April 6th?
The council could come back and, and suspend the resolution. You'd have to meet.
You'd have to call a meeting. You'd have to call a meeting.
Yeah.
You mentioned earlier about us being one of the 40 so odd testing sites in Lee...
Twenty.
Twenty, I'm sorry, 20. Is that open, to your knowledge, is that open to only citizens of the state of Alabama that test here, or is that open to anyone?
I don't know how it is anywhere else here in the city of Auburn where they're testing. You have to call, you have to be screened, and you have to make an appointment. I do not know if they screen you for being a citizen or not, but you can't just go and get tested.
Is the citizenship not the real question, is just do we have a plan or procedure in place when we're, to an extent, attracting folks who believe that they have been in contact or currently been exposed to this virus into our city? I mean, is there a plan put in place to protect the rest of our citizens? I'm sure, I'm not assuming that there's not. I just, I thought of that as we were speaking on that, that we're going to be attracting folks from all over the place to come with the sole intent to get tested on whether or not they have this.
And I don't, I don't know, that's, East Alabama Medical Center is running that testing. We'd have to find out for them if they are testing others outside of Lee County.
I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just thought of that question. More information on that would be great.
But we can find out if part of their screening areas are Lee County. I would assume that everybody in Lee County can go there, but I don't know if outside of Lee County can go there.
Typical medical services footprint, they stand beyond the county anyway.
You're exactly right, Jim.
I think that, you know...
I want them to be able to be tested. I'm just saying we need to, for our healthy folks too, we need to make sure. Anything else? Okay. If not, is there, let me say one final thing. It's important for our citizens and our council to be representative of this. If we can hang in there for two, three, four weeks, hopefully we can get this by us and we can get back on to regular life. But it's going to take some discipline on everybody's part. It's going to take all of our citizens buying in to practicing social distancing, to not being in large groups, just to being smart about where you are and what you're doing. And I hope our citizens will take heed to that. And the sooner we can get this behind us, quicker we can get on with life as we normally know it. But I appreciate everybody's understanding and patience as we work through this. It's going to continue to take more understanding and patience before it's over with, and I encourage our city to hang in there and let us know how we can help them. All right. Is there a move to adjourn?
No.
A moved second.
Or adjourn? Mincy?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Rizwell?
Here.
Hoagie?
Here.
Larson?
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Here.
Andrews.
Here. Officially didn't call to order the city council meeting, but that's okay. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. During the committee, the whole, we had a discussion about a couple of different resolutions that we'll be considering tonight under other business. One is a declaration declaring a state of local emergency, and the other one is a resolution that is strongly worded and strongly encouraged, encouraging the citizens of Auburn to conduct themselves in such a manner that is respectful of all of us and helps keep this community as safe as possible. But we will be considering those during other business. We also had a number of questions about the current situation we're in now, and I appreciate city manager Buston being able to answer and all of those questions for us. Are there any other announcements from the council? Okay, I know we do not have Auburn University Communications, obviously, tonight. We all know that they are officially out until April the 10th. They will revisit that on April the 1st. The city is in constant communication with the university about their plans and what they'll be doing. So no Auburn University Communications. At this time, we've got an opportunity for citizens to please to talk to us about anything on the agenda. If you would, please come to this podium. It has been moved back here, and you have five minutes to address the council, and please give us your name and address for the record.
And mayor, if I might, if there are anybody who are going to address, we have Joey Brook, who is here from our Public Works Department, who will be wiping down the podium and the microphone after each use. So if you see that happening, that's what we're doing.
Not a problem. Thank you. Thank you, Joey. Anybody like to speak to us? Okay. With that being said, Jim, before we get into city managers communications, would you please describe, I know that the room here tonight was thoroughly cleaned before we came in here. Can you just speak to that a second?
So the room was professionally cleaned and fogged, so that a disinfectant was put throughout the facility. Joey and David Dorton and Cynthia Wiliford. Joey removed the seating, as you see, the front row seating on the right side and the two rows on the left side here. He also enforced our social distancing by marking off the chairs where we're not appropriately seated. All that will then, we will re-clean the room when we're finished tomorrow morning. Again, it'll be refogged. Just doing everything we can to try to keep at least those of us here in this room safe.
Thank you, Jim.
And anybody who uses the room after us.
Sure. Thank you very much for all those efforts and time that all the staff spent on this. Okay. City managers communications.
Under city managers communication, the first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I would. Item 8D1 and 2.
D1, 2. Anyone else? Yes, 8E3, that's 8 Echo 3, please. Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Buston, 8D1 and 2.
Okay. Item 8D1 is a name change for a city street from Embrace Court to Vineyard Court.
May for approval.
Second. I have a motion, second. Any questions? Ms. Taylor?
Yes. I just wanted to know what was the procedure for renaming streets?
Yes, ma'am. It doesn't, you don't see these very often. I'm not sure this current council has seen a single one, but you've got two tonight. It's actually in, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's in the city code of ordinances, and it allows anyone to request a street, name of a renaming of a street. Let's say a new subdivision comes in, and the streets are named on the plat and they're accepted, and for whatever reason, someone desires to change a street name. There's a process for doing that. So it requires a public hearing before the planning commission with a recommendation to the city council.
So both of these, not to jump ahead, but both of these have gone through that process? They've gone through planning?
Yes, sir.
And been approved? Okay.
Now, I think in item 9A, I mean, not 9, I'm sorry, D1, I saw when I was reading it, that somebody had an error in the name. What does that mean? There was an error in naming this Embrace Court?
Apparently, the developer named it against another developer's desires, and the land changed hands. And they decided that they wanted to rename it from Embrace Court. You may recall, there was a conditional use approval for a church that hasn't yet been constructed called Embrace Church. They actually modified the planned development for Tivoli. But essentially, they had, a lot of these subdivisions, they have themes for their names. And so now Tuscany Village is known as Tivoli, so it's kind of got an Italian vibe to it. So they thought Vineyard might be an appropriate street name and a little more consistent with the theme than Embrace Court. Hopefully, not a lot of people are embracing in Italy right now, but having said that, so that's what that's all about. But what is important to know is particularly when it's not a new subdivision and you've got properties that are developed and residents living there, renaming someone's street can be not terribly welcome by folks who live there. They've got to change their address and all those kinds of things that are burdens for them and inconveniences. So we notify all the properties that are on that street that is proposed to be renamed. In this particular case, there aren't too many owners that would be impacted, but those that would be impacted have been notified.
Any other questions? All right. So we do have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 8E3 is 2WR, oh, I'm sorry, they're going back to...
Number 2.
Item 8D2 is changing the name of Huntley Drive to Mara Vista Drive.
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions from the council on this?
It was the same question.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 8E3 is 2WR of Georgia, amending their professional services contract for the Wright Street parking deck. These are the architects of that facility.
May for approval?
Second. Motion and second. Any questions?
Yes. What was the original contract that's being amended? Dollar amount, please.
$575,000.
So the amendment is three times the amount of the original contract?
Yes. And so you might remember, this particular project, we started back, I think, before y'all were on this council. And we were planning on doing a deck the size that we are doing right now. A project came up, and so we had the architects get off of the smaller deck and build a larger deck, or design a larger deck in anticipation that that project would go through. The project did not go through. We went back to the smaller deck, and we just got the bids on that smaller deck, which part of their, part of any architect's fee is the final bid on the project. They get a certain percentage of that project. So it turns out that that is what, given all the work they've done and what the final percentage of the final bid is, that's what it turned out to be.
So what drove that price up is the bid being...
The final bid drew it up, and then they did have to do extra work because we had them design the parking deck that we did not go forward with. And they're back now at the one they originally started with.
They do some design work on the one we originally started with as well?
I'm sorry, I...
Did they do some design work on the one we originally started with as well?
They did.
So they're not starting from scratch on this one?
No, I mean, they did some work and then stopped the work, and then now they finished the work. Now, I don't, I can't tell you percentage-wise how much work they did because they were, we quickly went from the 350 deck to the 500-plus car deck, because that project came to us very quickly after we announced that we were building that deck.
And we're back to a 350 deck now?
Correct.
Car deck? Okay.
Yes.
So in theory, Jim, they designed a 350-car deck, and then we changed them and asked them to design...
Well, they didn't design the deck. They started designing the...
They started designing the deck.
Then we stopped them and said, no, make this a 500. We had more space, so make how much you could design on this bigger space. They did that.
They did that.
They completed that project. We had the design, and then the project fell through.
So they never finished designing the smaller deck? We stopped them?
The first part, they didn't. Now, they have now because that's what we put out to bid.
Any other questions for Mr. Buston regarding this? He said they have now? They have finished?
The design?
The design at this point?
Yes, and we put that out to bid, and that's on your agenda tonight to accept that bid. And part of their fee is based on what that bid came to.
It's a percentage of construction is part of what's in an AIA contract. I'm very normal.
Okay, but they have completed the bid?
No, the...
I mean, they've completed the design?
Correct.
They have construction management responsibilities.
Some $500 and something thousand so far, and they have completed the design. And now we're going to pay them another 1.5 million?
No, no, no. This is upping the total from 575 to 1.5, and that's, that number that you see, we are obligated to spend the percentage of construction. They would also get a percentage of change order. So actually, the number is lower than this if we have no change orders. We're trying to hedge for you. We think we could spend up to 1.5, but not an additional 1.5 on top of the original contract. This is all encompassing. The amendment allows us to go up to 1.5.
All right, so we're not talking 2 million. We're talking up to 1.5, including what we've already spent.
Correct. And there's, the resolution is clear that the final cost determined is provided for in the professional services contracts, and that's because if it were to be 1.5 to 5 million because of a change order, we don't have to come back to you, but we're coming back to you to be clear that it is costing more money, and we want you to be aware of that.
Was the cost increase because of the previous idea, was there was like going to be some cost sharing with the private tenant? I'm a little lost into how it was half a million for 350. The original was half a million, is that right?
We've had scope changes.
That was an estimate based on what we considered the deck was going to be.
It went up in size, but then it's back down to the original size, but the cost...
Right, and construction costs have increased during the same period because it stays percentage of construction. So the fee fluctuates.
This was started when, Jim? In 2015, 16?
The deal closed in 17 with the Baptist Union. In 18, we executed a professional services agreement in January of 18, and now we're to March of 20, and we're adjusting that. So we've been designing from January of 18 to present, multiple versions.
So it's fair to say the construction costs have gone up almost three times?
No, we've also had scope and design changes. So when we expand and contract, when we go into the downtown design review committee, which wasn't in existence when we put this into play, we had to do more renderings that weren't in the contract. We've done a new electrical transformer that is going to be underground. We don't have to look at big metal boxes. That's in this project. Well, that was an additional design fee. We changed something about security cameras and the way we're going to manage parking. That added some outside fees. All of this is encompassed back in. The structural engineers have looked at the structural elements of this three separate times for varying versions. And so those are costs in here. We did much more on Wright Street to help storm drainage in all of downtown Auburn. That added additional civil engineering costs. All those costs go under the umbrella of the architect, and it's all called for in our contract. But this is capturing all extra fees plus their percentage of construction to date and moving forward all in. This is the number.
Yes, yeah. So just to be clear, the project got bigger. Is that fair?
Got bigger, and then it got smaller again.
Yes, but what you're talking about improvements on Wright Street, there's a certain improvement...
Yeah, the scope changed, absolutely.
Okay. This is our fault? This is our fault versus the contractor's fault?
Those are all improvements, right? All of those would be improvements.
The architect was done, but they were asked to design this per their contract, and they have met their obligations time and time again, and they have put off other work on our behalf while they've been working on this, because they gave up other projects because they were obligated to us to design a parking deck, and we continued to change the scope on them. So they've met their obligations. We did. We changed the scope on them.
We changed the scope on them because we thought the project was going to be a different project that was going to include, let's be honest, a big hotel project right there.
Absolutely.
I think the reality is that building costs have gone up because there's just more building going on. It costs more money to build, and that's what's driven this number up. Is that fair to say?
That's absolutely fair to say, and we're seeing that across the board. Well, leading up to now, of course.
But at the end of the day, the purchase order is not going to exceed the 1.5.
It may slightly, again, we don't want to say no, but what this, it won't exceed it by a lot unless we come back to you.
We put a 10% contingency in here already, hoping to not exceed that.
We're hoping, we're doing all that we can do to get it to be like the building we're building next door, and try to make sure that whatever budget we give you, whatever we're putting forward, we don't exceed that. And so we're hoping that it will not exceed that. And we're doing everything we can. So far, we've been very, up until now, we've been very good on the building next door. With all the rain delays, I don't know, but we're still within budget.
All right. Any other questions for Jim or potential Megan about this? Seeing none, we've got a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items that we took off the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All moved.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is carried forth.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is the placement of a four-way stop at the intersection of North Donahue Drive and West Farmville Road. at the intersection of North Donahue Drive and West Farmville Road.
Move for approval?
This, this is an ordinance?
Ordinance, oh, excuse me.
I'd like to introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none. Lindsey, for unanimous consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am.
Smith?
Ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to ask a question because we didn't have discussion.
Do what?
We didn't have any discussion.
Don't we vote twice on this?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. But we still, we still got a discussion, right? Right? We can still have discussion on the vote? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Discussion, does anybody have any questions? Okay. All right, this time we'll vote on the traffics, the, the ordinance itself. Lindsey?
Now we have discussion.
Now we?
No, now we have to move to approve.
Move, move to approve the ordinance.
All right, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
No, moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. I just want to, there was a couple of questions from constituents wanting to know if a four-way stop would be the safest option for that intersection.
I'm sorry, Beth, I didn't.
Sure, a couple of questions from constituents who aren't able to be here this evening wanting to understand why a four-way stop is the safest solution for this intersection.
So we did a considerable amount of work on a warrant study. The stoplight did not warrant. I know that there was a lot of people in the area, or several in the area, who had asked us to put a stoplight there. The stoplight does not warrant. We can't install a stoplight unless it does warrant. We did also, because we wanted to be very thorough, check to see if it would warrant a four-way stop. And we can justify, under the warranting criteria, that a four-way stop is, is justified to put there. We, with the caveat that we want to look at it after a year to see if it is causing additional accidents or it's causing an additional delay. And so that's why it's in there that this, in a year, we will come back and, and reevaluate that intersection. At some point, we do expect that there will be enough traffic to warrant a, a stoplight, which probably will be the best solution for that intersection when it does warrant.
Is that all that goes into the equation is the amount of traffic determined with red lights?
There are a lot of things. Traffic, number of accidents. I forget, there's a long list of criteria that is looked at during the warranting.
State list, DOT list or something?
It's from the, the design manual for the traffic engineer design manual, yeah.
Is this the same place where, well, this is not the same area. Just talking about putting the, oh, it's not.
Roundabout?
Yeah.
That's on College Street. That's Farmville and College. Okay, you mentioned that you want to reevaluate it in a year. I don't see that in our packet unless I just missed it. It was in the memorandum, the email rather, that you sent us. Is that something that needs to be in this resolution that we're going to reevaluate it, reassess it after a year?
We could add it to the resolution if you want, but we are going to reassess it after a year. I mean, but we, that is on our, our work plan already.
And the other thing I was wondering about is, it said it will be accompanied, this is in your email, it will be accompanied by installation of stop-ahead flashing signs placed ahead of, of the stop in all directions and appropriate striping, including stop bar striping, will be installed. That's not depicted on the, in the packet. Is that still the plan?
It is the plan to put the stop heads on. I've been told since I wrote that memo that probably two of the ways don't require the, the flashing stop sign, but the other two ways do.
Yeah, I would think that the ones coming on Farmville, east and west, definitely. Because I know they're not supposed to, but folks are hitting that at 70 miles an hour and they're going to pop up on the stop sign, so.
So what, we're, we were ordering those signs. We don't have them yet, but what we're doing in the meantime is putting those, those big boards, those saying, you know, stop-ahead boards.
Very good. And just a procedural question is, while we're doing these warranting exercises, is it possible for us to install a temporary or interim traffic control measure while all of that other stuff is going on? You know, while the warranting process is going on? Because, you know, your message mentioned that as expected, a light was not warranted. So we've, we've suspected that for a long, long time. And people have been asking for improvements to this intersection since 2018. Think I was, can we do something on the next time around so that perhaps we can work in parallel instead of working in lockstep? Say it's not warranted, so now we'll get started on something else? Go ahead and install something else while we're doing it in order to enhance safety on the interim basis?
No, because the whole idea of the warranting is to enhance safety. If you, you put something in place that is not warranted, you run, if, and somebody has an accident, you run the liability of them telling you that you caused the accident. And so the whole idea of warranting is to decide what is the safest solution for this particular problem? If it's an intersection, if it's, so you don't put something in place that, that has not been warranted to be in place.
Yeah, that just sounds like a bureaucratic thing that says, you know, we're not going to deal with safety.
It's the law. I mean, it can be bureaucratic, but it's the law.
Again, I, I would, I would just hope that in general, we try to seek a solution to things, find a way to make something happen versus saying, no, this is, we can't do it. That's, that's just, that whole approach frustrates me. As you said, I only have a year and a half of experience in municipal government. You were keen to point out. But, you know, that's kind of where, where I come from is you have a problem and you try to find a way to alleviate the problem, not find a way to say, okay, well, I can rely on this book or that book and, and find a reason to say no. There's always more people that can say no than there are that can make something happen. But that's just a philosophical thing from my approach.
Kelly, I appreciate your editorial and I appreciate your frustration. I understand where you're coming from. Jim, the background of this is that municipalities and, and state, you know, Alabama Department of Transportation has, they've got practices that have been studied and engineering policies that they follow that really take risk and liability into consideration when they make judgments. Is that correct?
That's correct. And Mayor, the, the whole idea of this is to provide for the, the, the safety and comfort of the whole, not those who are complaining about one thing or the other because of their experience. You have to, you have to provide for the, all of the citizenry, not just those who are complaining. And so those design guidelines are put in place to make sure that you are doing the most appropriate thing by practice and, and study rather than just by what emotion is causing you to do at the time.
I don't consider vehicles rolling over into parking lots emotional. I think there's some validity to us trying to find a way to make things safer for those citizens that traverse that intersection.
Is this ordinance not doing that?
Yes, I'm talking about our procedure in the future that I was hoping that we'd be able to have some improvement in the future so that we don't.
But we are providing a solution.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We are providing a solution and I'm, I'm very, and I'm tickled to death that this has finally gotten to this point.
Awesome, so we should celebrate.
So I'm very excited about this and I'm really willing to support it. I'm just hoping that we could get something in place for the next time this comes up so that we're not having complaints in 2018 and fixing them.
So Jim, if we were to evaluate, let's just say we evaluate this in a year, as we've stated we're going to do, would we be starting in 365 days as far as doing some kind of a warranting out there? Or would we, could we start the warranting earlier and make a decision in 365 days about what we need to do?
So the whole idea of warranting is to evaluate what the traffic patterns have changed over time. Within a year is a reasonable amount of time to, to believe that traffic patterns will have changed. Traffic patterns aren't going to change, warranting is not going to change. So we have, we believe in a year, there is a chance that traffic patterns will change. So we want to reevaluate it in a year. They could change for the worse. By putting those stop signs there, it could change for the worse, at which point we would have to remove the stop signs.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, at this point in time, we will vote on this and roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B1 is Ronald and Joyce Jenkins requesting an annexation of 3.1 acres located at 254 Lee Road, 433. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Motion and a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Now, do we have a motion to approve? Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item 9B2 is Kurt Cope requesting an annexation of 0.67 acres located on the west side of East State Drive between 1970 East State Drive and 2002 Rockwood Lane. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
Present the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B3 is Heather.
Hold on just a second, Jim. We didn't quite get through that. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
All moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, item 9B3 is Heather McGee Reardon requesting an annexation of 2.82 acres located at 2002 Rockwood Lane. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Under resolutions.
Hold on just a second, Jim. Do I have a motion to approve?
All moved. All moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none. Lindsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Mr. Buston?
Under resolutions this evening, we have item 10A is True Deliverance Holiness Church requesting conditional use approval for a community center on property located at 932 North Donahue Drive. Planning commission recommended unanimously, a unanimous approval of this item. A public hearing is recommend, is required.
This time I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Mr. Albert, is anything you'd like to say to us? It's your time, man.
Mr. O'Neill was supposed to have been in, but I just wanted to personally thank the city. I often think about the relationship we have. It's been a blessing. We built right at 20 years ago and the relationship was great. 20 years later, we, and we just want to say we really appreciate all you all do. The city, the city council, the employee, every one of you, we thank you. City manager, we appreciate.
Thank you, Noel. What's your street address, man?
Sorry. 932 North Donahue Drive.
Thank you.
I may add, Mayor, it's us who should thank you, Bishop Talbot, for building church over there. I remember when you built the church, you've done a lot of work in the community and you certainly have improved the community over there. And I really appreciate sincerely the hard work that you and your church put into that area.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that it, that it's going to be a community center added on to the church. So I just want to be, I want to thank you for that. Now let me, uh.
Hold on just a second. We're still in the public hearing. Your time's coming. All right, anybody else would like to address the city council? All right, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion from the council?
All moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Taylor?
Okay. Is the community center, is it going to be for public use or just church use? Oh, okay, awesome. Awesome.
Bishop Talbot, I want to echo what's been said. Thank you for the presence you are in our community and your leadership in our community. You've been a member of our Auburn, the Auburn Housing Authority for many years and we appreciate your service there and thank you for what your church means to Auburn. Thank you. All right, any other comments from the council? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B is the vacation of easement and execution of a quitclaim deed for Joanna Knight for Lot 4 of the Westview subdivision. A public hearing is required.
We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
All moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council?
I read this in the, in the packet. So when you say execute a quitclaim deed, that is to, and I know you went out and, somebody went out and talked with Joanne about this. So I guess she was okay with?
So this is property that basically the city has that we no longer need because of this development. So we are giving it to them. So that's a quitclaim. We are, we're quitting our claim on that property.[1576.11]
But... Future subdivision?
No, ma'am, this is Habitat for Humanity lots that the city deeded a Habitat some time ago, and we were gonna build a sewer line. In this easement, we ended up finding another way to build the sewer line, and we're giving the property back to each lot from which we originally granted the easement from, so we're eliminating our easement so that they have more property that's not encumbered by a sewer easement, so just giving it back to the property owners. In this case, this will be her, and the next item, it will be back to Habitat for Humanity because those haven't transferred over to homeowners yet.
Oh, okay.
And this is where the block grant funds were used to build a sewer line, to sewer the rest of these lots in a different way in this last year. Okay?
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 10C is the vacation of easement and execution of a quitclaim deed for Auburn Opelika Habitat for Humanity for Lots 3A and 6A of Westview subdivision. A public hearing is required.
Open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval? Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay, Mr. Buston, we do have a couple items and other business?
So, what we will call item 11A is a resolution declaring a state of local emergency.
Okay. And this is a resolution, so I need a motion?
May for approval?
I have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
To clarify on, hold on, which resolution? I'm sorry. First one, two-page.
Clearing about state of local emergency.
We're gonna, we're gonna grant the authority to the city manager regarding to oppose the public safety curfew, but the procedures, we are granting that authority, but we're not, we don't have a procedure, or we don't have a resolution in place to do that.
No, we would have to come back to the council to, and again, this is, we're following what the, what the state code is requiring us to do, and I ask this of our attorneys, because I do not want the authority to grant a, grant a curfew without the council weighing in on granting a curfew, but we have to have that in there as part of the ability for then council to be able to grant the curfew.
We're discussing potentially suspending meetings if granted by the state. What's gonna be the procedure then if we need a curfew and meetings are suspended?
I'm sorry, if we're what?
If meetings are suspended, if the state grants us authority no longer to have bi-monthly meetings.
Well, under the state of emergency, Jim, if we could, we could call a meeting to come back in and just decide one item, right?
The state is not going to require us to suspend our meetings. What they are going to allow us to do is suspend our meetings or have a meeting via electronic means. So, but it is my intention to fully come back to the council before, or if we ever need to do a, a...
A curfew.
A curfew.
A curfew, there's no, there'll be no authority granted to you under this.
No.
Without our...
Without your permission, and without a considerable amount of vetting, and it takes some time to do that, even before we would be able to bring you anything to consider.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Excuse me, Councilman Smith, you were mentioning possibility of changing this where it's not the mayor, but the council is the one that extends it. Did you want to bet any further?
What, I'm sorry?
That was for Brett.
Yeah, yeah.
Jim, what I said, there was an earlier discussion on page three of the first one, top paragraph, and right now, it's, the extension of it is through consultation with you and the mayor, and Brett mentioned that, he discussed it, I'm just, just don't want to let it get by us without...
I'm happy to, I think that's, if we want to discuss that, I think that's a good possibility. I mean, I see the, see the importance, of course, if we're gonna be suspending meetings, to continue, continuation of this authority, but also don't want to abdicate authority that I may need or need to have for my ward, too. So, I'm happy to discuss that further, if any other council, I mean, obviously, you're running the meeting, Mayor, but...
Oh, yeah, it's good, this is time of discussion.
That would be my only...
Hey, this is the first time I'm seeing this, too, so it's okay.
I certainly see both sides of that. I think that there, in the, we want to give flexibility to have a continuation of this declaration, but I also see that we could call a special meeting if we needed. I also could see that, in the instance, you know, the world's always falling in on its lawyers, so I could see a position where we could be incapacitated, or we couldn't call a quorum, which could put us in a position that we couldn't extend it without meeting. So, I don't know, that's kind of where I'm, I'm not giving any clear, I'm not real clear on that at all.
Jim, you just pulled this straight out of the state code, I'm presuming.
Pretty much.
You got guidance on this?
Now, I mean, it is conceivable you could make that, the council, instead of the mayor. Again, with that one caveat that Councilman Smith has brought up, you have to meet to extend it.
Right. I mean, I think the genesis of all this is for us to be able to expedite decisions, but not to be reckless. Correct? Expedite important decisions, but certainly, we're not advocating for us to make reckless decisions.
And as you mentioned, by April 7th, things have changed so much that we may not even have the need to extend it. Everything may have been done already, so...
Or another avenue is the governor could supersede this authority in totality, and this wouldn't...
That's what I mean, yeah, the governor would supersede it.
That's probably a safe bet that that's what's gonna happen.
I believe so. I can't guarantee it, but I believe so.
May I have faith in the mayor's decision-making ability? Act in the best interest... I don't anticipate that the mayor would act recklessly.
I would echo that with you. I'm certainly not implying recklessness, I'm just duty and authority.
Being a good lawyer.
Hedging, I'm hedging. I, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to bring this to that point up. Look, folks, if that comes to this, I'll call every one of you up, have an individual conversation with you, and we'll talk about it, I promise. But if y'all want to change it, I certainly understand and respect that. Not a problem. Nothing personal.
I believe Mayor Andrews has done a fantastic job during this period of time, and I trust that the actions that he's going to take and that our city manager, Justin, will make the right decisions.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so the motion on the table is to adopt this as it is written. Okay? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then the second one, Mr. Buston?
We'll call this one item 11B is a resolution to the, informing the citizens of Auburn of the emergency, or of the importance of following the guidelines of the CDC and the Alabama State Health Department. I guess we'll leave it at that.
I would add that these are strong recommendations, and I would even say that they are expectations. And I hope that our community will take heed and will act accordingly in the best interest of the entire community.
Would it be possible, just for the sake of our listening audience, I think the meat of this is the last page, that we could read that into the record for those who are listening or watching?
Do you read it in? Is that what you did?
Yes.
So, be it further resolved? I think it would be appropriate since the, the public has not seen this, I think it would be. So, you would like me to do that?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Auburn, Alabama hereby determines that the public health of all citizens would best be served by adherence to the following guidelines by citizens and businesses. All non-essential and non-emergency travel is strongly discouraged between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Non-work-related public and private gatherings of persons of 25 or more is strongly discouraged. Those businesses routinely providing services to gatherings of persons of 25 or more are strongly encouraged to limit numbers of patrons such that the six-foot social distancing standard can be maintained. That citizens avail themselves of city of Auburn online services wherever possible.
All right, do I have a motion?
No moves.